Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Here. I will entertain a motion to amend board agenda item number two, to include an executive session topic pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G5, to discuss matters required to be confidential by federal law or regulations or state statute.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes. And now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline demotion or compensation of an employee or official of the school district pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to prepare for, conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G6, to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency protocols for the school district, which if otherwise disclosed could jeopardize the security of the school district or board, and pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G5, to discuss matters required to be confidential by federal law or regulations or state statute.
So motioned.
Second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Thank you. We will see you later.
We are back from our executive session and we're now ready for the regular meeting. Ms. Kirby.
Good evening and welcome. We recently celebrated School Counseling Week in February and I want to take the time to let our school counselors know how amazing they are. Our school counselors collaborate with fellow staff, community partners, and families to support our students. They are committed to improving the well-being of our students and they have a tremendous influence in helping them achieve school success. We know that this year in particular has been a very challenging time for everyone and our school counselors have really stepped in to add a very important layer of support for our kids. So I'd like to celebrate and acknowledge our school counselors from our schools. So from Boulevard Elementary School, Betsy Race; from Canterbury Elementary School, Christine Bell; from the Career and Technical Education Program, Jacqueline Blackson; from Delisle Options Center, Dr. Kristy Cooper; from Fairfax Elementary School, Melinda Stoichuk; from Garrity School, Heather Higgin; from Heights High, Tanja Minifee, Michael Murray, Haytham Rasool, and Charlene Circe; from Monticello Middle School, Ronald Howland and Rakita Pastor; from Noble Elementary School, Dr. Michelle Jackson; from Oxford Elementary School, Kimberly Woods; from Rockwell Elementary School, Lindsay Self; and from Rockwell Middle School, Anne Bradley and Tristan Matthews. Let's give them a round of applause, please. And again, thank you for all that you do and continue to do. Next, our latest Tiger Team members of the month for February. These Cleveland Heights University staff members have been recognized by their peers and community for going above and beyond to continuously contribute to the culture of excellence in our district. Your colleagues who nominated you for this recognition have shared these heartfelt words about you. So I'm going to read the names and share the comments, then I'll ask those who are here in the audience to come up for a picture so you don't have to stand all the time. From the Board of Education, Steve Egner. Steve has such a positive work ethic. He is always willing to help out anyone at any time and give advice or recommendations for your mechanical needs. He acts like the father figure, always asking me if I change my oil or tires. He is just great to be around. From Boulevard Elementary School, Sandy Purchase. Sandy goes above and beyond every single day. She cares so much about the kids and makes sure to never let any child fall through the cracks. She often takes time to tutor kids or help out in classrooms during her own lunch period. She comes to school with a positive attitude every day and always puts forth 100% effort into her job. From Canterbury Elementary School, Marion Napier. Marion conducted the Black History Month announcements and music all month long in February. She also does an after-school cooking class. Thank you, Marion. From Delisle Options Center, David Nobles. Dave provides students with tremendous support and encouragement both inside and outside his classroom. It is not unusual to see him counseling a student after class time, offering hope and encouragement to help them pass whatever struggle they may be facing. He embodies what it means to be a teacher in every facet of the word. From Fairfax, Deborah House. Deborah is respected and adored by both our students and all the staff at Fairfax. From Garrity, Michelle Manolio. Mrs. Manolio best exemplifies high-quality teaching. She goes above and beyond to prepare lessons that will support her students in showing proficiency and provides targeted support to ensure that her students meet expectations. From Heights High School, Lorna Rudolph. Lorna makes her science units come alive by helping her students relate the subject matter to the world. She has outstanding enthusiasm and focus in her instructional strategies and methods. She has transformed her classroom and our building into an atmosphere of academic excellence. From Monticello Middle School, Courtney Blackson. Mrs. Blackson is great at ensuring that our work environment is safe, inviting, and fun. Being her colleague means knowing that you are supported and appreciated. She focuses her energy on collective efficacy, working with fidelity to ensure that all Monticello staff and students enjoy each day and rise as a team. From Noble Elementary School, Vertika Krishnan. Vertika is a truly measured member of the Noble, truly treasured member of the Noble family. She has been an asset to support in the main office as well as a support for teachers and staff. You will often see her juggling multiple tasks, doing her best to support Noble Elementary. From Oxford Elementary School, Kim Woods. Ms. Woods works hard to make Oxford a great place for students. She leads our Young Men of Oxford, 5th Grade Girls Group, Student Council, and organizes annual Black History Month celebration. She supports students who are struggling academically and socially. She is such a big part of the Oxford community. From Roxwell Elementary School, John Perrino. John is so patient with his students and is an expert at relationship building. He is a caring coworker who should be recognized for his hard work and effort. His calm, compassionate demeanor is appreciated by all of his colleagues. And from Roxwell Middle School, Jennifer Hollander. Jen is always coming up with new ways to engage students and connect their math lessons to real-world experiences. When I was out for maternity leave, Jen helped substitutes get quickly acclimated to 6th grade math while still incorporating new avid strategies for the year. She has a passion for teaching math and it shows. Congratulations to the winners and those who are in attendance, please come to the front so we can take a photo. And now we'll hear from Heights High Juniors, Amaya Diggins and Trinity Kimbrough, who will deliver the superintendent's student cadre report.
My name is Amaya Diggins, I'm a junior at Heights High. As senior of the superintendent's student cadre, we're very grateful for the high tide. We're honored to be here this evening and we want to thank you for that opportunity. First, we would like to tell you about our athletic teams and provide an update about several upcoming events at Heights High. First, boys' basketball is currently competing in the district tournament. They play this Thursday in the semifinals against Twinsburg at 7:00 p.m. The boys' team finished second overall in the Lake Erie League. Secondly, girls' basketball finished their season in the sectional finals. This is a developmental year for the varsity teams with many of their key players just freshmen and sophomores. The Lady Tigers finished fourth overall in the LEL. Freshmen Robbie Codwell and junior Peyton Smith both earned LEL Player of the Week honors this season. In hockey, they had a really great season. They won the Heights Holiday Tournament, took second in the GCHSHL Blue Division, and earned their first OHS double-A playoff victory in several years. All of this was done with one of our smallest rosters in years. The current players, family, and administration are working to boost their roster numbers for future years. In swimming, this was arguably their best season in a very long time. For the first time in over 20 years, Heights swimmers scored points in the state meet while swimming on the last day of the swim season. The boys' 200 free relay consisted of Aiden Peters, Emmett Fluharty, James Huff, and Andrew Teetz. In wrestling, in total, 11 wrestlers competed in the sectional tournament this past weekend at Stroudsville. Four Heights wrestlers, Ben Cloud, Darian Thompson, Jahan Isaacs, and Karen Wright, qualified for the district tournament in Perrisburg. Freshman Brandon Kaser, excuse me, and senior Alex Cummings placed fifth and will serve as alternate. In bowling, they finished their season in the sectional tournament. This season proved to have its challenges for the bowling team with several cancellations. However, the team persevered and continued to improve their game. With only one senior on the team, the Tigers look to carry momentum into next season. And finally, in indoor track, the track team continues to have success and build towards the outdoor season. Currently, senior Marius Coleman is ranked second in the state for the 400. Senior Braden Gallagher remains top 12 in the state for the mile. Boys' 4x2 relay are currently ranked third in the state, Jacob Rice, Marius Coleman, Keonche Boyd, and Jeremiah Diller. Boys' 4x4 are currently ranked first in the state, Keonche Boyd, Jacob Rice, Jeremiah Diller, Braden Gallagher, and Marius Coleman. Freshman Jane Mueller has proved to be a bright spot on the girls' side as she qualified for the state meet, and she is currently ranked 24th in the state. Here are a few important events that are happening at Heights High. The high school celebrated Black History through door decorating contests, recognizing the Divine May, hearing Black History facts during announcements, and holding many discussions geared towards uplifting the Black experience and Black voice. To ensure students are ready for life after high school, teachers have collaborated to share insight into their very own college and career experiences through the High School to the Future Flipboard Page. Here, students can listen to topic-related advice from their teachers. Gear Up has hosted a financial literacy workshop for students and families. They partner with Jason Mockett, Sir Owner of the Breadwinners, to increase understanding of proper budgeting and create sustainable long- and short-term goals. The positive behavior interventions and supports have gained the interest of students and parents who are ready to promote more positive behavior and incentives at the high school. Additionally, the PVI's focus for this month is commitment. Students are being encouraged to fulfill their obligations and keep their agreements. The PTSA won the TikTok Grant, which will allow them to host a family-centered conversation within our high school community about digital kindness, safety, and responsibility. Students participated in the First Ring Leadership Institute to investigate and research an issue in their community that could use their leadership skills to solve. Eighteen student athletes participated in the national signing date to carry their intent to attend various colleges and universities. Next, I would like to talk about Inspire, an aspect of our theme this year. Recently, the Heights High School Vocal Music Department went to the middle schools and performed to the future freshman of Heights High. The goal was to inspire those who may be thinking of having involvement in the VND. We hope to inspire them to take a risk and do something they might or currently endure doing.
I would now speak on Reunite, another aspect of our theme this year. The past two years have been extremely hard for our country as a whole because of the pandemic. Though, this year, my school chose to reunite its students and faculty in a proper orderly fashion with rules and regulations that keep us all safe. Learning online was a struggle for most kids the previous year, including myself. I'm just glad that now I can learn face-to-face and be able to interact. The best part about being reunited at school is getting my high school experiences back. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And now we will have public comments. Angel Fasolo wants to discuss Reginald Williams is not a district employee and the school-to-prison pipeline.
For years, I have tried to give information regarding qualifications and the many acts warranted with Mr. Craig Reginald Williams. He's listed as our discipline supervisor, compliance officer, discipline task force district rep, a family engagement virtual candidate facilitator, impartial hearing officer, as well as recurring posts of student code of conduct of community overviews. The thing is, Mr. Williams is not an employee by a school district. He's a contracted lawyer who was paid at least $111,000 by this district last year alone, and neither being one of the district or disclosing this regularly. No technical and district being questioned that he is an employee.
I can obtain personnel records containing transcripts as well as documentation of trainings for our own employees through standard public records requests, yet I cannot get information regarding the qualifications or trainings for a bankruptcy lawyer our district apparently contracted with over a decade ago. A simple request for the personnel records of any Heights employee may contain notes from the hiring process with comments as to why the then candidate was qualified. And yet, with a lawyer who is not an employee, such personnel file does not exist. Given the multiple roles and sensitive nature of much of his work, our community should know why he is in each role, his qualifications, the chain of command, and the many conflicts of interest regarding his multiple roles. I have asked the district and Williams himself for years about training or expertise he may have in the area of race students with disabilities, education, and other relevant topics. I have never been given an answer. On one occasion, when asking Mr. Williams directly about qualifications with respect to students with disabilities, he only replied, quote, "Judging from your emails, you have asked others in the district about me in the past. Please continue working through that line of communication." So I'm here tonight, still working through that broken line of communication. Tonight, I ask, who oversees this person who seems to have freedom to move about the district as he pleases? What is the chain of command? To whom would a student, family member, or actual district employee turn to with concerns or questions regarding him or any of his roles? What qualifications does this contracted bankruptcy lawyer have to make him well-suited for this district? Why doesn't Mr. Williams or the district clearly state that he is not an employee and that he is a lawyer? Why, in fact, is it more implied that he is a district employee? What is the district's goal for the discipline supervisor and separately for the impartial hearing officer? Why is there an absence of impartiality in the role of impartial hearing officer? What conflicts are present with respect to these multiple hats worn? And what will the district do to eliminate such conflicts? Who can or cannot directly contact this lawyer? Does he bill each time anyone contacts him? Why are public records requests for his contract denied? Also, while I still have not been given information as to training related to students with disabilities, I was told that if needed, a lawyer would be consulted to make sure that disability rights weren't violated. So my follow-up question is this: Why does this lawyer need additional legal counsel? And why does this district have contracted lawyers for a contracted lawyer? There needs to be clear details about Williams's role and limitations. Every time his name is mentioned on the website, there should be a disclaimer that he is not an employee and is a lawyer. Every time he meets with a student, family, or staff member, the same should be disclosed. And when he sends a mass email like he did with the Student Code of Conduct to the entire district and adds in, "Feel free to contact him," it should be disclosed. If he runs the Code of Conduct overviews, he should refrain from comments that are suggestive that he is staff. None of the other nine law firms in this district use district email addresses that would imply that they are employees. So if he continues to use district email, it should be clear in all correspondence that he is not an employee. I would also suggest that he should not be wearing the multiple hats he wears here because it prevents impartiality. It should be recognized that he represents the district and district interests. This board needs to recognize that there are conflicts of interest and a lack of impartiality and begin to make meaningful and appropriate changes. Everyone in this district deserves answers and clarity. The role that this non-employee is tasked with can fuel the school-to-prison pipeline for our most vulnerable populations. Furthermore, because it's unclear, I'm curious as to Williams's role with our Student Code of Conduct that is still inconsistently followed and that many students and employees still don't fully understand or find clear. I'm frustrated about my personal experiences and the subsequent refusal to give information about this individual, and yet also disappointed and heartbroken for the individuals who may have gone along with anything he said or did, right or wrong, who didn't even know to ask if the district was misleading or possibly violating their rights or not being impartial. In my first encounter with him, I had no clue that he was not a district employee. I am certain others never knew, and it has become clear to me over the years that there are employees here who do not actually realize this. My concern is about student and family rights as well as transparency for all in this district. I am concerned about will define or potentially inappropriately filled roles that could possibly do more harm than good. My concerns aren't just specifically for my family, but for our entire school community.
Thank you, Ms. Fasolo.
Why advocate, which is a useless word, if actions and practices prove district plays any role?
Ms. Fasolo, your time is up, thank you.
Especially those of certain demographics, including but not limited to race and disability. So why any attempt at advocating are we paying well over $100,000?
I would like you to please stop, your time is up.
May in fact be feeling the school-to-prison pipeline, especially for our most vulnerable population.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Submotion.
Second.
Is there any discussion or any questions about the consent agenda?
I have no questions, but I'd like to at least make an acknowledgement of one of our retirements.
Please.
And I know that all of the employees that are retiring are sure excellent examples of our district, but one who has touched my family a lot was Miss Deborah Frost, and I just wanted to wish her a happy retirement. And I can't imagine what Monticello is going to be like without her because she did so many roles at Monticello, and she's just a phenomenal teacher. She's been an important part of our Teachers Union 795, and she's just exemplary. So I just wanted to thank her for her many years of service and everything that, you know, she's done for all of our kids in our district.
Thank you.
She's fantastic. I would also like to just acknowledge, at our last meeting, we recognized gratitude for Melissa Entrovos's donations of jewelry-making equipment to our art program, and I see that in this month's donations, there's even more. And I just want to again recognize that this is just such a beautiful way for her husband's career to continue giving and sort of to continue building a legacy. I hope, I really do hope that we can arrange for an opportunity for Melissa to come perhaps next year and spend some time with the students because Melissa spends quite a bit of time at the studio, and I really think that it would be cool if we made it possible for her to come spend some time with the kids.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes. And Ms. Kirby, I'll turn it over to you again.
I believe the first item is the policies or is it the...
Policies first, yes.
So I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Lombardo for our policy readings, component first.
All right, good evening, board. Tonight, I present to you the final reading of our Policies Group B. These are 19 policies. We've had two readings the last couple months, so this will be the third and final reading. We would ask that you take a vote on these policies.
Thank you. Does anybody have any remarks about specific changes to these policies?
I would like to thank Jody for fixing my terrible paragraph in Policy 0169. I kept fiddling and fiddling and I couldn't get it to work, and I'm glad that your fresh set of eyes just looked at it from a different perspective and cleaned it up in one fell swoop. swoop, so thank you.
If nothing else, then, Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the final reading of Board Policies Group B?
I motion that we vote to approve the Board Policies Group B.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Hines.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
And now we have the district calendars, Ms. Kirby.
Okay, Dr. Lombardo.
I am here today to present to you the two district calendars that were vetted through our calendar committee. These are calendar proposals for 2022, '23, and 2024. They came in before our meeting presentation. Looking at the next slide. Just talk about the process as far as our calendar committee and our process. So prior to accepting these, the committee spent some time going through different scenarios and looking at different districts. At least 30 days prior to adopting the school calendar, we can have a hearing. So today, we're presenting a hearing for reading these policies for the final board action. As we look through the process of superintendent, what's had an impact, whether it have on instructional programs, CTE programs, and our non-public schools that we work with, and we have to make sure that the hours are in line with the broad market education.
After this meeting, they'll both calendars will be posted on the website, so we can obtain any community input on the calendars that we want to consider. And the final board action for adoption will be the April board meeting. So here's a list of our calendar committee members. We have Board Office Administration. We have all of our unions. President and Vice Presidents were invited, and we did have the PTA Vice President on this committee, as well as Beverly Wright from the Board, and thank you for being on that committee as well. And this was the group that met three different times to look at different scenarios. So as far as the calendar proposals, you'll see the dates that we met were two in January, and we had one in February, and the committee did come up with two proposals that they're bringing forward to the board. You'll see that the amount of days are there on this slide, 172 days for the 22, '23 for students. The 192 at the bottom is the teacher days by contract, and if you look at the 23, '24, there's 173 student days, and we do have 192 days by contract for teachers. If you have that, that is in Board Docs as presentation, so you could click on those links at your leisure to see the details as far as the calendar. The next slide, we do an analysis to see where we are as far as calamity days and hours for each level. You'll see we need a minimum of 910 hours in a year for grades K through 6, and 1,001 hours for the high school. Based on professional development days, holidays, you'll see that these calendars for the high school would have six days of calamity available. That's grades 9 through 11, and three days for 12th grade. And you'll see in there that the 12th graders leave three days earlier, which is why there'd be only three days for this calendar. So this calendar does align and does give us enough days for calamity. You'll see middle school are nine days of calamity, and elementary is 24 days of calamity. For the calendar, 23, '24, we would have seven days for the high school, 9 through 12, four days for 12th grade calamity, 10 days for middle school and elementary, 24 days. So this also aligns to having enough calamity days within the calendar.
That's the presentation on the calendars. We're ready to go to the calendar until we have any new answers at this time.
Dr. Lombardo, I have a question. So I'm looking at the calendar for the 22, '23 school year, and I'm just curious why it ends, the last day of school being on Monday, June 5. And I'm just curious if there's, it seems weird to me that, you know, after the Memorial Day holiday, we come back, and then we'd have another weekend, and kids would have one last day on the 5th, which is a Monday. And if there's, I mean, I'm sure there's a reason why, but it just seems like that's kind of an odd to have that one day hanging out there. And if there were any other proposals in order to eliminate that, so, you know, kids would just be done on Friday, June 2nd, or, you know, would extend them longer? It just seems weird their last day of school would be on a Monday, they would come back for that day.
Yeah, you told me that, Jody. The committee really tried to figure out the best scenario of looking at the beginning of this calendar. We generally start the new teacher orientation on a Monday, so we did try to maneuver the beginning of the calendar to help us with that last day. But the committee decided that if we started on a Monday, it would be the best. Looking at the amount of days, the amount of contract days, our teachers' contract, it was very difficult for us to figure out whether to take a day away in order to bring us to the proper number of days of the contracts. We had to follow the contract. I will tell you, we did spend quite a bit, almost the whole meeting, on that particular concept to try to see what we can do. The committee, looking at spring break, spring break is at the end of March, which we align with all the other CTE schools. It wasn't an opportunity to do something during spring break, but that means it would be a different spring break than the other CTE programs, which have extortion. So that kind of moved us away from having a spring break. Compared to Christmas break, we did want to have a partial week, which is why we see that we got two weeks kind of early that in January. So we didn't really look at that, and this was the best that the committee felt we needed to have at the time.
Okay, thank you. That was the one thing I looked at that kind of stuck out as unusual for me.
Dr. Lombardo. So I don't anticipate anything, but we will send these two are non-publics, and anyone who must do that, I think, that it is amongst time. I know Ms. Kirby has made a decision on CTEs, I know you have some attorneys talked through that.
Yeah, we made the decision to align all of our spring breaks. That came after a visit to the Sixth District Compact, who really doubled down on the fact that having that consistent spring break was really important for the continuity of the program, and so all five districts decided we would schedule the spring break together collectively. Helps with a lot of things, especially around transportation, but also students, we don't want students to miss out on a week of class because they're in different schools.
So in Chardon, a number of years ago, the superintendent basically just committed to, "Spring break is going to be the last full week of March," and that's just so that families can plan. You know, without having the calendar, you know that spring break is going to be the last full week in March, the last five-day week in March. And I would tell you, you know, it's little things like that that mean the world to families, because, you know, so often you're planning, you know, families plan a big trip, Disney or something like that, that being able to plan significant ways out means an awful lot. So it would be cool and good to our community if we could try to pull something like that off, or just to keep it in mind.
Well, we have had spring break in the last week of March for a good number of years now. I'm trying to remember how many years it's been.
Good.
As long as I can remember. So I'm glad that all five districts can keep the same spring break, and obviously, going forward, we want to make that the pattern. My question is whether the school year starts and ends roughly the same time for the five districts.
I don't think it's that different. I can't recall at the top of my head, though, but I think it's pretty close.
Okay. Because, you know, you don't want to have one district show up, and it's already two weeks behind schedule for whatever reason, because their school year is very different.
Well, I'm really thrilled that CTE is elevated in the eyes of the superintendents and how this has been factored into the general decisions. And I know that even if we had four superintendents, four to five superintendents had the same question, it was, I mean, I think it was an aha, this is something we all need to do. It's really great seeing that actually transpired. I'd love to see future presentations actually sort of put a little bit of grit of how we align with our other, all five districts who are part of the CTE program. I just think it escalated and elevated. But this is very impressive.
Any other questions?
We have a month-long review during which we collect public comments, and then next month, we vote to approve these calendars. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I'll send you all those comments, as well as the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Who do people direct comments to, and where is that information?
So after tonight, I'll be able to put those comments out. They'll be posted on the website.
So there'll be the calendars, as well as a link to provide public comment?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Lombardo.
And next, I will go to the superintendent's report. As we look for that to load. Is it taken there? Oh. Yes, could you? I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't have it up on my computer, sorry. Thank you. All right. So before we start, I would like, you can look at the next slide, I would like for us to take a moment of silence in memoriam, and we did reference this at the earlier meeting, but I wanted to do a formal recognition. We learned in late January of the passing of Deborah McCollum. She was an administrative assistant in our district for 26 years. She just retired in December of 2021 from Roxborough Middle School. And I can tell you, the last time I saw Ms. McCollum, she actually had retired, and she was coming back to Roxborough to train the new administrative assistant in her duties just to make sure that that transition was really, really smooth. So we were all shocked and saddened when we found out about her passing, and sent our condolences to her family, to her friends, to the Roxborough Middle School community and all of Tiger Nation. Just pleasant, committed, warm, motherly, and it's such a shame that she is not going to be able to enjoy her part or retire. So I ask the board if we could take a moment of silence in memory of Mrs. McCollum. Thank you.
Can you put the microphone a little bit closer?
Closer, is that better? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to share updates aligned to our strategic plan. The first is around CHUH Summer Camp. It is time for Tiger Camp again, and also all of the other summer programs that we have. We will have Tiger Cub Camp, Tiger Camp, High School Summer School, Middle School Summer School, AP Success Camp, Algebra Bridge. We have opened up registration for Tiger Camp and have been planning throughout the year, but especially in the month of February, for those programs. Also, preschool enrollment is also opening up very soon on March 8. Our Equity Task Force has been planning our equity training, which will be happening in March during the Staff Development Day. We also have followed up with some additional consultants to assist us in operationalizing our equity policy. Their training will not only ensure that we have a plan over the next five years to meet those goals, but also offer support and training to members of our board, members of our cabinet, to supplement and enhance the work that the Equity Task Force is already doing. So I did do some follow-up with some of the partners that were shared and have received some additional information, and we're continuing to vet a couple of different partners that we're looking at to help us with this piece. And so I'll continue to provide those updates to the board, but we will be planning board equity training. Our State of the Schools address is scheduled for March 16th at 7 o'clock PM, and that will be here at Heights High School. We will have that certainly open to the public and also livestreamed as well. This past month, we celebrated Black History Month. We had multiple activities and events happening at our schools, everything from assemblies to performances. We had a district-wide book study, and then we also had some of our students present last night at the Cleveland Heights City Council meeting, so they called a special meeting for our students, in their celebration of Black History Month. As relates to the district, we did have students who presented in January who were the winners of the Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. We also had National Scouting Day during the month of February, where we had 18 high school athletes receive their official college letters and sign for those. In University Heights, Heights High Teacher Odasha Blue was recognized as the University Heights Educator of the Year, that's for 2021, and Garrity 5th Grader Sophia Meja has received the Good Neighbor Award for her exceptional character. March is our PPS Survey Month, and so as you know, our post-secondary planning system is the system that we will be using to make sure that we have coordinated supports for all of our students. We have a very ambitious strategic plan, and in order to meet the goals of that plan, we really want to make sure we have the tools and the structures to ensure that all of our students are known, loved, and supported, and supported towards that goal of college and career success. So we will be sharing information again to families, because this is an annual process, the post-secondary planning survey. The students take the survey, the staff takes the survey, we also send that survey out to families. Nancy Puppler is leading that work, and she'll be, you know, getting out a communications campaign aligned to that. And then our final, final goal area that I'll provide some reporting on is Goal 5, and I'll speak specifically to the COVID-19 protocols. Our reopening committee did meet during the month of February and did recommend making the change of the quarantine and isolation period, so reducing that amount of time in alignment with CDC guidance. We have not changed our contact tracing procedures, so those remain in place. We continue to maintain a dashboard also of COVID cases. As everyone is aware, the CDC... As everyone is aware, the CDC did recently share updated guidance on masking. We will be meeting, we will be convening the reopening committee next week to discuss that guidance. I'm waiting also on guidance from the Ohio Department of Health and also the Cuyahoga County Board of Health to inform any changes that we make as relates to any of our masking policies, if we decide to do that. And that's been our process, the CDC provides their guidance, and then we wait for ODH also and the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for their interpretation. So that captures for the month of February, the superintendent's report. And I'll, I'll entertain questions.
Now, the CDC guidance, which I just read earlier today, discussed masks in both public transportation and transportation by public schools. But there was this very clear sentence that said, "Individual school districts can still choose to do what they see fit, as they see fit." So I think it's important that the reopening committee gather all the information that we're waiting for from the other sources, the Department of Health and the County Board of Health, in order to make the right decision for the next phase. But I was just interested to see that, you know, while they have made their statement, they, they do leave it open to individual districts to do what they think is the best thing for their students.
And I'll, I'll, we'll make sure I get that information to see what the schools that we transport, what they're doing. We have received outreach from some of those schools asking what our policy, you know, if our policies have changed.
Right.
And so they've intimated their opinions, I think we should be doing, but we'll make sure we get that information from all the districts.
And then once you make a decision, obviously it's incredibly important that the new policy be widely disseminated, that people can find it easily, that we let not only CHUH know, but all of our other districts as well know.
I think that as a person who participates in the Return to School Task Force, one of the things that just sort of, the timing of things blended well is, you know, we have recently had a, received a lot of data around chronic absenteeism and the impact of those absences on, on learning. And, and so when we had the opportunity through guidance, guided advice, or whatever you want to call it, to, to reduce the number of days that were required for someone to stay out after having or being exposed to COVID, it just dovetailed real nicely. And for me, it made that, that decision easier because you just, the data is just so incredibly clear. So I was thrilled that we were able to do that and do so safely. And I'll be very interested to see what folks have to say about the masking.
One thought that occurs to me is that just as individual districts have the right to make the decision that is right for them, individual families also have the right to make the decision that is right for them, because not every family has the same situation at home, and we know that. And we need, as a community, to respect that for some students, keeping a mask on may be incredibly important. And it's none of our business what the reason is, but we just need to respect that. So now it's time for my report, and most of my thunder has been stolen already.
Did you skip the treasurer's report?
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry. Mr. Gaynor, please.
I only have one, one brief comment to make here. So I did participate in the Fair School Funding Plan Regional Workshop and Feedback Data Collection. So it was a long and winding conversation and several hours of, you know, a little bit of, you know, the work group patting themselves on the back for the work that they've done, but then to, also to talk about the concerns that they have moving forward, which we've discussed here before, with, with multiple biennial budgets and the advocacy that's going to be required to keep this moving down the path we want it to, particularly with these competing proposals like the Backpack Bill. So there was, there was a lot of conversation about that. And then they also did collect some data to say, you know, what do you like about the plan, what do you not like, what, how would you rate it, and what would you, what would it take for you to rate it a 10, on a 10 scale? So I have communicated previously to them our issue that Jim had pointed out, you know, about, for example, comparing us to Shafer and the deficit that we're starting from in terms of the level of funding we have versus a neighboring district. So they're aware of that, and I did bring that up again, and I did tell them that I would provide them some specific examples of that so that they can see clearly what we're talking about. And, and again, you know, there's some other districts did offer different complaints based on their individual circumstances or some criticisms. You know, they reiterated again, you know, it's difficult to have a one-size-fits-all kind of a funding formula, and that's why they really tried to keep it student-focused and student-centered. But the conversation is ongoing, so I just wanted to report back that, that we're continuing our, our work with, with that group, and they fully expect that they're going to ask for a lot of advocacy efforts from all districts as we get to the point where we're looking at another biennial budget. That is it for me.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Okay, so the only thing I have left, which has not been mentioned, two things. One, there are still open spots for people who want to participate in the Career and Technical Education focus groups. Those are happening essentially every hour on the hour on Wednesdays this month. And you can, if you're interested, go to the district website and click on a link that takes you to a signup genius, and you can choose which focus group works in your schedule. And then my second point is that I just received word today that the House State and Local Government Committee in Columbus may be holding a hearing next week on either Tuesday, the 8th, or Wednesday, the 9th of March on House Bill 327, which is the Thou Shall Not Teach Divisive Concepts Bill. So if anybody is interested, the easiest way to submit testimony is to go to the website It's honestyforohioeducation.org, and then on their info page, there's a link to how to submit testimony. Ms. Kirby and I were down in Columbus, it seems like ages ago, to attempt to testify against House Bill 327. It's going to be very hard to predict whether, you know, anybody can drive down to Columbus on short notice when you don't even know what day they're going to do it. But you can at least write something up and submit an email, and, and that's, that is not dependent on, you know, being able to just take off work and drive. So I would encourage people to do that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Do we have any board committee reports?
Yeah, the Life Facilities Committee met last week. We welcomed a new member, Mr. Tim Square. So that's, that was an excellent addition. We, Mr. Petkak walked us through some of the big, big picture stuff. It was a very good meeting. Also, from an advocacy committee perspective, I wanted to say thank you to the Heights Coalition for Public Education for hosting on the 23rd last week what was a very, very excellent panel discussion around the voucher lawsuit. It was an explanation of each of the five claims in the lawsuit that was presented by a different panelist. Wanted to thank the panelists for taking part in that. We had about 165 board members from all over the state who were on the Zoom. It was an excellent evening, very good questions, and really a nice, nice lively discussion.
Dan, I'd also like to thank Tony Thayer for doing the moderation on that. She did a great job.
I just want to thank the mayor's office and city council for, and our teachers and students for putting together the event as an Black History Month. I was just so proud of our students. I mean, the talent that we have housed here at Cleveland Heights is just, is wonderful. And I really appreciate the fact that the mayor and city council office put that event
It was lovely. The poetry was terrific.
Yeah.
And the music, you know, goes without saying, was, was excellent. Is there any new business? Any unfinished business? Any correspondence and announcements? We have a concert. Do we have a concert on Friday, or do I have a mistake in my calendar? I'm not sure.
We do have, as mentioned by the, the student liaisons, but we've got a lot of postseason activity happening in terms of athletics. We've got men's basketball, are going into the third round of the playoffs, they're going very far, they haven't gone this far in quite a while. We've got indoor track with aspirations to the state tournament, they're not, not quite there yet. We've got, we're sending swimmers to the state championship, and we've got wrestlers. We've got four wrestlers and two alternates who are going to the district tournament, which is a step away from the state tournament. So that's really nice. We, we haven't sent wrestlers, I don't think, in, in a while, so it's nice to see that program rebounding as well. Lots of great stuff going on.
If nobody has anything else, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A second.
Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heitz?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.